Once again, I'm joined by my colleague, Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Wallner, and I'm your host, Mr. Sudo. We can all rise for the pious allegiance.
Recording in progress.
Yeah, that's not me, that's you guys.
(inaudible)
The United States of America, and to the Republic from which stands one nation, our God, indivisible, with liberty, justice, and freedom.
Mr. Gilberto, will you start us off? Let us know why we crossed out a certain item?
Certainly, Mr. Chairman. So, just to let folks know, the first item of business was scheduled to be discussion of Park and Central Streets, and those of you who are at the intersection of Park and Central, those of you who were at the meeting two weeks ago recall that the board had asked for some folks to attend, including folks from engineering and from the police department. We have subsequently been able to, somewhat surprisingly but pleasantly surprisingly, enlist a traffic engineer to actually conduct the required traffic count at the intersection tomorrow. So, we'll have some information that will be pretty fresh for the discussion relative to how the intersection bears on the requirements to warrant a potential traffic signal. So, the chief and the engineering folks are all preparing to attend the meeting on May 22nd, where we can then provide a more detailed update and have a more productive discussion. So, I just want to provide that update for folks.
Any questions from my board members? Make sense? Okay, next.
Mr. Chairman, through you, just an opportunity for a discussion relative to the use of American Rescue Plan Act funds. I know the board has had a couple of discussions, but we will put it on the agenda and have had some further discussion with the financial planning team as well. And over the past couple of weeks, the finance director, he has had some discussions, both with the Department of Revenue and also with our accounting consultants. And a couple of pieces of information have come to light that are a little more restrictive than the initial guidance. The first is, and we've heard a lot of concern about the claw potential for the funds to be clawed back. So, we continue to have a deadline of December of 2024 to obligate or determine how we're going to use the funding, and a deadline of December of 2026 to expend the funding. What has, a new requirement that we've learned about is that when the federal government defines obligating the funding, they are going to actually require us to enter into a contract to expend the funds, which is a bit more restrictive, obviously, in a bit of a higher world and purely having a vote of the select board to plan to use the funds for a particular purpose. So, we will, we initially were having discussions about spreading the funds over a potential three fiscal year period, fiscal years 24, 25, and 26. And while we still have the ability to do that, we're going to need to keep a close eye on how quickly we're able to enter into contracts to spend that funding to make sure we don't lose any by not expending under one category and now not having the ability to re-obligate under another category. And I know the finance director is going to join us shortly, but, you know, one thing that has been brought to our attention as a potential option is we're, because we're receiving, we're receiving about $4.7 million from the federal government, which is a good amount. That's both a local share and what ends up being our portion of the amount allocated to Middlesex Counties. It's allocated based upon a formula they've got together. So, we actually have two pieces that we've received totaling $4.7 million. $1.4 million of which you saw was obligated for a capital project in fiscal year 2024 for the reconstruction of the Park Street Bridge. So, we've got about $1.4 and some change from some smaller COVID-related expenses that have been expended out. The alternatives that we have are to select projects, which would be, need to be approved by a select board and enter into contracts for them to be funded. That does not require town meeting approval to proceed down that road. Another avenue that is available to us is to, to basically work with the Department of Revenue and to reduce our local receipts, to report them to the state. And what that would do is we would replace those local receipts with ARPA funding as a funding source, and the money that we would still anticipate to receive as local receipts would essentially become free cash that we could set aside in some sort of a stabilization fund. In fact, that would require town meeting action, and it would make the funds subject to town meeting approval for utilization. And that's something we certainly would need to give some, some consideration to. And then another avenue we have is to, you know, purely look to move as much of our capital expenditures into the ARPA funding as possible. So, we talked a little bit about this last week. We have about $1.1 million in free cash items that we're proposing to fund at June Town Meeting this year. You know, an option would have been or would be to fund those using ARPA funding, knowing that most of that would be expended in pretty short order, that we would be able to effectively obligate it. But that's a significant change from what we were talking about just two weeks ago here. So, I'm not necessarily here recommending that strategy. I just think it'd be pretty disruptive. So, you know, I think the key takeaways are that the only clawback that we're hearing about is funds that we obligated for one purpose by December of 2024, but then maybe we didn't need all of the funds for that purpose, or we didn't expend them all. By December of 2026, those funds would be lost. We can't re-obligate them to another purpose. And we do have this potential, these options of choosing to instead more aggressively fund our capital program with the ARPA funding, or to take, you know, basically offset our local receipts and generate free cash. But again, that would require town meeting approval, make the funds subject to town meeting. But it would give you more time to expend the funds if we thought we needed. So, that was a really quick update. I put a memo in there from Sean at CLA. I thought it was very helpful to see that information, and they're doing a lot of work for other communities. And, you know, I think we have some options. We can choose to stay the course right now, but the one thing I would say is, you know, my sort of off the back of my head intention to say we could use a third of that funding in the fiscal year 2026 budget, that's probably going to be too late. We're going to have to look to expend those funds sooner than that.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto. Mr. O'Leary, comments question?
How in depth do you want to get the sheeting?
I think the big thing for the moment is, you know, do we want to make any change to the way we're funding our capital items? If that were the desire of the board, and it's not necessarily what I'm recommending, but if that were the desire, we would want to have that conversation now because we're going to be signing a warrant in a few minutes with relative to funding projects. We have talked with, with, again, with CLA, our accounting assistants, and they, you know, have indicated if we made a decision later on that we wanted to fund those capital items using ARPA, we could, we have October Town Meeting where we could go back and do that. So, it's not all the pressure isn't on this evening, but, you know, if there was a strong sentiment one way or the other, we'd at least be going to stop the discussion. And I know one board member's absent too, so I
That's all right. My thoughts in relation to the ARPA funding is, you know, we should use these funds for, I don't believe we should be using them for necessarily our regular capital expenditures. You know, those are things that need to be fit into our budget and we need to do anyway. You know, I believe that the, this windfall of sorts should be used for projects that will improve the quality of life for generations to come, if we can embrace some of the projects, get some ideas, and potentially for some infrastructure. But, you know, infrastructure, I'm talking about infrastructure, I'm talking about maybe tying in the downtown area to the sewer district, to the sewer system at the, at the high school. Because we have several municipal buildings there, schools that need to be tied in, we're going to be facing, replacing those septic systems sooner rather than later. So, funds for that sort of thing. But, you know, sidewalks, enhancement of trails up at the Ives Park. If the rail trail can gain some sort of support within the community, you know, if we put up $2 million, you get $10 million from the state. And those are projects that are going to be long-lasting for future generations to enjoy. Additionally, we should be looking at solar projects, electric vehicle charging stations, some of this, some of which can generate income for the town for generations to come that we wouldn't normally be able to do. So, to me, I think we need to take some time and have a workshop to, to discuss really what do we want to be doing. Right at this particular point in time, I'm not in favor of augmenting our capital budget and things that are already on the docket. As much as we, we can't fund everything we need to do, I don't see spending these funds to do it. I just, to me, I think we need to do a little more of long-range quality-of-life issues, some return on the investment, you know, for the community for generations to come. I think that's how we should be thinking about it. That being said, you know, if we're up against a time clock, you know, then we can talk about the mechanisms that have been broached as far as, you know, converting it to free cash and have it available later on. But I don't think we're at that stage now, and I think it's important that we really look towards putting this money to good use so that the entire community can enjoy the benefits of it. But let's just quick off the top of the head.
Mr. O'Leary, Mr. Wallner?
You know, I know we've already talked about this twice before, so this is the third time. I also agree that this is, you know, a once-in-a-pandemic lifetime type gift that's come our way, and we should think of it pretty much, you know, as it should be the quality-of-life issue, and we should be thinking long-term. Should not be absorbed into the budget. That's totally separate in my mind. And so, it should be used for projects that are going to last for a very, very long time, and that, that will, and if we can also save money, you know, I was asking the question if we hooked up all the municipal buildings and the, in the high school, you know, fire station area, will it reduce our, our overall cost going forward? And I think the answer was yes. You know, something like that makes a lot of sense. So, a gift that keeps on giving. That's kind of what we're looking for. So, that's my position on that.
Mr. President?
I really have anything to add. I agree with both my colleagues on that, on these points. And I do like the idea of workshops where we can add a strategic layer for that, for the use of them, if we have, if we have the time.
Well, that makes four. I agree as well. The only scenario would be if it becomes, which it seems like there is a solve. I was always concerned about the use or the lose it, but it seems like there's a solve now. And, you know, it doesn't make a difference. I mean, if it has to go into somewhere where then town meeting votes, I mean, you know, I think the select board has usually made it very clear that they're not going to, you know, it's the town that's got to decide this anyway. So, as long as the, that was always my concern that, you know, we may have to think more current because the feds would come in and say, you better spend this money quick. So, if that's not an issue, and then it can always be converted, I do agree. And then, just one clarification. So, Mr. Gilberto, it is, so the, it's all, anything that's appropriated, contracts need to be signed before fiscal year 2025?
December 24.
December 24. Okay. So, meaning any potential large projects that a contract is signed after that, it couldn't be used for that?
That's my understanding.
Okay. Mr. O'Leary?
In relation to current warrant article in the Park Street Bridge, and the fact that if we appropriate a certain amount of the ARPA funds, and the money, and the bids come in favorable, and we've over-appropriated, are we at risk with that? Because there's state money involved with that as well as this ARPA funding. So, I would just be cautious to ensure that we don't over-appropriate ARPA funds for this project and squander it. So, I don't know how we're going to, where we're at in relation to where we think the bids are going to come in.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So, we have an estimate that's fed into that $1.9 million project number. That is an escalated estimate from where we originally started at 1.2 million? 1.4 million? I think for that project, we have a bit of lead time where we're going to finish the design and put it out to bid. So, I'm expecting that within, you know, by the end of this calendar year, so December 23, we'll, we'll know what it's going to cost us and whether we have a balance to re-obligate elsewhere. Where that will become a challenge is as we get closer to December 2024 for other projects. So, we're saying 1.4 million. We're going to ask you at some point to formally vote that as a board, as an obligation. But we're going to enter into a contract well before the December 24. You'll know what residual we might have. And like we do with everything, we're going to try to capitalize that grant, state grant first.
Right.
And then spend down the ARPA number. That's our, our funding.
So, and so we get it, just for clarity, it's not necessarily subject to town meeting appropriation because it's going to be ARPA funds. It'll be up to this board to finally obligate that amount after we get the bids in.
That's correct. I mean, so there's, there's a reporting timeline where we, I think they want us to indicate what we may use the funds for, but we're going to be in between those during the bidding process. So, I suspect you're not going to have to make a final vote till after we have the final time for this. But even if you didn't, even if you had to vote, you know, tonight to obligate it to a certain amount, once the bids come in, that's going to be the moment where we're obligating, making, we're revising a vote on the board. I don't foresee that being a challenge. But it will be a challenge come the later part of next calendar year, where we're now trying to juggle everything.
Okay.
Can I start the discussion real quickly? You know, some people would say, why not devote it towards wastewater, you know, why not earmark it for fire station or rail trail right now? On the wastewater, the, we've already learned that we're going to be able to borrow money at a very, very low percentage rate versus anything else you're funding. So, that may not be the best place to use that. Also, it hasn't been approved. Fire station clearly hasn't been approved. And the rail trail, you know, until the wastewater is done, you know, I wouldn't bring that forward to the people. So, it'll be a, you know, a tight timeline potentially by hitting that December 24. But until it's approved, you know, you can't commit funds that aren't, you don't want to assign it to, with the danger being if you assign it to something and you don't follow through, you'll lose the money. So, we, we're limited on how much we can sit or unless we can figure out the time. And so, we might be delaying that decision up too much later. So, I just want to be clear about that. It's not that those are not important projects, but there's a practicality here to it. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Wallner, for that, because the irony of your statement is just like, we don't want to commit to something that hasn't even been approved yet. You know, how there's those big grants for certain projects that the state won't commit until it's approved?
Yeah.
Interesting.
I was about to say, would you like to add?
Just, just one comment, and I agree with the, the using it for, for major projects. And you mentioned the, the downtown sewer project to tie schools and municipal roads into a high school treatment plant. There is another one that we talked about last week. It's, it's coming up real fast, and it's a big one, is the Culvert on Jetham Street. And that's probably going to be in the order of $3 million. That's never going to fit into a normal capital budget. And that would be, I would imagine, a debt exclusion if we didn't do it, you know, but I, I see that as being funded through a normal capital program. So, I think that ought to be in the mix when you have your workshop and you're thinking about what projects need to get done. And that certainly is one where we're spending some money this year, or going to if it's approved at the town meeting for the engineering study and to get ready for, for a contract. But it needs, it does need to get done. So, keep that one in mind.
That's all I have. Just continuing to tell it. So, about anything that?
I think that we have to be very careful when we look at large projects because guess what? They get larger. The, the asset street culvert is, is not an example. There was just a sinkhole that a week or two ago, and it, it needs to happen. The other piece of it is, when you look at something like the downtown sewers connecting municipal and school buildings, this was a project that we looked at about three, four years ago. And at that time, it was one, it was $1 million. The following year, when the capital plan looked at it, it was $1.005. Last year, it was $2 million. So, these things are not going to be less expensive. So, I appreciate wanting to hold off and have more discussions about, about the ARPA funding that bear in mind, that some of these larger projects are going to become increasingly more expensive.
Thank you. My colleagues, anything else? Okay. Mr. Gilberto?
To the next slide.
Mr. Wallner?
Mr. Chairman? So, signing the spring annual June, the June 12th, 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting Warrant, there was a draft warrant that was put in the packet. I had indicated that I would review the final warrant this evening. It's going to play right up on the screen, folks, if that's okay.
Thank you.
Thank you. And, so are you able to just reduce that? So, a couple of moving parts with regard to this, and I hope we won't overcomplicate it. But we had had an Article 2 Capital Budget Amendment for this current fiscal year's budget, and we knew that the purpose for that article was to address any, to address the fact that when we approved the funding for the turf field last June, it was intended to be funded by bond premium from borrowing from a previous point in time. The way it got voted at Town Meeting was voted as an authorization to borrow purely, so adding new borrowing, which was not the intention. So, we spoke with bond council and town council. We have an article here to correct that. They recommended a specific article to the language relative to the turf field, which you now see on here as Article 3. And what we are doing is we are rescinding previous authorization. We are not changing the dollar amount. There is no new expense that's coming from this. The project remains on the budget that we discussed with you at the meeting in the District Learning Lab in February. But we're clarifying that it was always intended to be funded by the bond proceeds, bond premiums and proceeds when it was put into the capital plan in June of 2022 and approved by the committee in May of 2022. And I'm sort of looking to Mr. Keller to acknowledge that that was in fact the intention.
It was.
We're correcting that. But because we know there's so much volatility going on with the cost of our capital projects, I am recommending that we leave that standard Capital Budget Amendment article language on the warrant. I don't foresee anything else coming up, but if we have any project that we're looking to close out and we end up being some, you know, small or moderate dollar on short in the next six weeks, this would be an opportunity for us to address it. So, I don't think we should lose the opportunity. But I fully expect it'll be a passover when we get to Town Meeting. So, it is a new, the new article is what we intended Article 2 to be, but it's now listed as Article 3, and we're keeping Article 2. So, in keeping score, we added an article to the warrant, but we're going to actually delete one later on, so we'll break you forward. Just going through, I'm not going to go over the articles that we discussed in detail at the last meeting on an article-by-artikel basis. I'm just going to go to where there were changes, if that's okay with the board.
Thank you, Mr. Gilberto.
For those of you following at home, this will get posted to the town website and in the eight locations of the constable must stay. We're joined by the constable here as well to post it for us. So, thanks for being here. Just continuing through here, these are all standard fiscal year 2023 articles for transferring funds to stabilization fund, to the stabilization fund. And most of them are funded by free cash, and I did put a tally in the packet that showed you how we were spending free cash. But I want to call your attention to Article 11, submitted by the school committee. This was a fund that the select board was part of setting up some four or five fiscal years ago now. We had it on there twice. We had it as Article 11 as a standard FY23 article, and then we had it as a fiscal year 24 article later on. We don't need to duplicate that. We're going to be making the transfer out of available free cash. So, this article appeared very, in almost exact format, except it was FY24 later in the warrant. We struck that. So, we're now back to the same number, or even in terms of arguments. And that we are recommending is now $150,000, Ms. Galvin, to be funded for that. Continuing through, we're not expecting to need any funds for a 20-year. We have a healthy balance right now, whereas, you know, with Kiara, just in case anything goes sideways, so to speak, on that issue in advance of the town meeting. I'm just going to move ahead to the opioid settlement special purpose stabilization fund. I know we had a little bit of conversation on this. That kind of came to the surface the day that we were reviewing the warrant with you two weeks ago. We had the opportunity to talk with the Department of Revenue, to talk with town council, to look at different examples. And we've come to some language that makes clear that the funds that come in are restricted for use based on the settlement agreements. And the way this article is written, as those funds come in, they will go directly to that stabilization fund. So, they will not need to close out to free cash from one year to the next in order to be transferred. They will be automatically preserved in that fund for the appropriate lawful use that's called for under the settlement agreements. So, the language that is in there allows that to happen. I will note that it makes it effective for revenue that we've received during this current fiscal year as well. We've received a couple of payments that have come in, but they're going to escalate as we go in fiscal year, in future fiscal years. These funds would need to go through the town meeting process to be appropriated and be expended. So, but they will need to be for purposes allowed under the, under the settlement agreements. So, hopefully that addresses the concerns we've heard from a number of different folks.
Good concern right over there.
Yeah.
Do you want to talk to me this year, the funds that came in this year, have to go to free cash? Did you guys say something to them?
So, he has language in there, in there written that specifying that money that has been received will go to that purpose. But if we need to make, if DIY is going to require the transfer, they won't make the transfer.
Okay.
But he wrote it to, if they'll let it fly in that fashion, he's written it to all of that down there. And I'll continue moving through the articles, a number of routine articles. I did check prior articles. I know I was asked, you know, why wasn't, why isn't hearing reports on towns and committees earlier? And the reason is because we've added more articles in the fiscal, in the current fiscal year portion of the warrant, so it's pushed it down a little bit later. When I checked, I think it was normally showing up at Article 6 or 7 prior to my tenure, and I apparently added 10 or 11 articles in the FY23 portion. That we mostly pass over, I recognize, but that, that's why it falls where it is. Those prior 15 articles do tend to go quickly, and a number of them will be passed over. But I did check that. I know that came up as a question here relative to the increasing, increasing the senior tax rebate. Folks who may have known that this was at $500 for a number of years, we increased it to $750. I'm now proposing to increase it to $1,000 per year for, for the purposes. The operating budget we'll talk about on the next agenda item. Again, we've spoken about the one-time fire department recruitment paramedic training that we'll fund, and the intention is to fund that with free cash, but also have it be available in the, not only, in the, in the likely event that we're not able to complete the hiring process during the course of fiscal year 24. You've seen, you've been part of many of the conversations. It tends to take multiple months for these hires to take place. And I expect that will be the case for the two current and two projected vacancies as well. So, this would allow those funds to continue to be available for hiring without putting pressure on a future, future budget. Again, I'm just going to hone in on anything where there might be some differences. So, the capital article, we're fortunate, we have a significant number of capital projects that we're going to be able to undertake here. And you see, we have an article that will show us at the very top all of the intersection projects with the various funding sources. Because some of the projects rely on prior previously approved funding, it's being reallocated. We have these notes that run from one to, I think, the end of the eight where you end, if I remember correctly. So, they are all, all in there with the funding sources on the right-hand side in the traditional format. We have the intersection of Park and Central delineated between the full traffic signal and the, the design and construction portion. I'll just note that $250,000 did include a pedestrian-focused signal, so that would be included here. The $350 would add the full traffic signalization. And as I mentioned earlier, the board will have the ability to have a further discussion on May 22nd. And I, you know, we'll see results from there, I guess. So, the one thing I will just note is that I know it was in the report from the Capital Improvement Planning Committee two meetings ago, but just to make very clear, there was a request from Parks and Recreation to supplement their grant-funded projects with $100,000 from Parks and Recreation retained earnings. So, that is written on here. And, Ms. Galvin, I can see the, the location where the A note came from. So, what I added there was it just supplements. So, a lot going on in the capital plan. It's all good news. A lot of things that we're able to get done, but a lot, a lot to print on one piece of paper, too. But we seem to have it all fit there. And I think I'm able to move to Article 29. In the process of looking more closely at the situation behind North Reading Subaru, where we're looking to address the drainage issue, there are two potential parcels that may be impacted. We had originally talked about Zero Wilma. It's also a little bit of an impact on Six Elmore Road as well, so this clarifies that. We would receive Town Meeting approval, and then it would still be subject to the select board's approval, if anything, in these ones or otherwise, addressing these issues depending upon the final design. We talked about getting feedback from the resident, residents. There's a couple of houses back there. Then we'll make sure that we get their feedback. And I know they're generally supportive, but like anything, they want to see what form it's going to take and have their input. So, we'll make sure that we can address that. And I just will note that we've, I think we made some clarifying changes to the language on Article 33 to make very clear for folks that this is a needs assessment and transportation pilot, not just for disabled resident, but also for elderly residents. I know we've talked about it. We've talked about the others, but I just want to make it very clear for everybody that it's for both populations. And that's directly tied to the Ring and Ride program that MVRTE UK runs right now for elderly to the Ring and Ride program that MVRTE UK runs right now for elderly and disabled veterans. So there'll be a portion of it that's a relatively small portion of the total project cost, $60,000 associated with assessment, and I expect a much larger portion will be funded to try to get that pilot off, off the ground to directly provide services to residents who are in need, specifically elderly and disabled residents. And I think some of you may have seen, we did benefit from a state earmark in the House of Representatives budget, and hopefully survive the budget process and then be able to see that over the course of the summer and into the fall. But I don't expect, even if it does survive the budget process, that we'll be able to get a contract until, until the form. So I recommend that we continue proceeding with the article. And tonight's votes are not to recommend or not recommend the article. At this stage, they are a little bit later on. This is just to sign the warrant itself. We talked about the revolving fund. I think the board was pleased to hear that's, that's paid, that's an amount that's based on fees paid into the elder services revolving fund. We just clarified in this language here that it was, we're making a change in the dollar amount, but only for the elder services revolving fund, not for the other revolving funds. I felt like that wasn't clearly written in the language if we got to work with town council type. As I mentioned, we ended up plus one and minus one at 35 articles, so they're all, they're all on there, and I believe, I'm happy to answer any questions. If not, I believe we prepare a motion to sign the warrant when we have the constable here, and I believe there's two, excuse me, two copies in the.
Yep.
Yeah.
Thank you, Mr. Gobert. Any questions, Ms. Menepelli?
I have five questions.
Five?
Yes. For Article 11, what is the current balance in the count with this COVID card?
It's not $200,000.
It already has $200,000 in it? And for Article 14, I think you've mentioned this before, Mrs. Galvin, but that Article 14 account, that doesn't go back to the free cash, it just stays within that fund to be expended?
Originally, when they came up with the ruling, DOJ said it was supposed to close to free cash, but this is the way to preserve it. There's just a little bit of, I'm unsure what came in this year, whether or not that has supposed to be cash to be put in in October, or if it can go correctly in a way this is worth it.
Okay. So that, this will allow it to go into the stabilization account came in, okay? And for Article, the Article 25, the capital plan, I appreciate that you split that up because we had such a debate just among ourselves on that, but how is that, how would that be voted? Because usually we just do an omnibus vote on the town meeting floor for the whole capital plan. So when we decide to make a recommendation or think anything like that, how do we do that? And then how does town meeting vote? It's obviously not going to be both things, right?
It could be both, Madam Chair.
Okay.
So I can just respond further. So if we were to do a full traffic, we do a full design and construction project, including a full signalization of the intersection at Park and Central, it would be a $600,000 project roughly.
Oh, I see, okay.
So the way it's on there, you know, I'm recommending at this stage at the board, you know, vote to sign a warrant with the project on in this fashion and to recommend it. I am expecting that we will have substantial, we have traffic count information, and what that will tell us as soon as May 22nd, that will tell us whether or not it still or does meet the, the traffic data, the volume data requirements for full signalization. It won't tell us that we have to put a signal off, but it will tell us that it does or does not meet it. So if it does not meet that number, then we're going to be advised not to put a traffic signal up properly to focus on a pedestrian signal. If it does meet that number, then we would have the opportunity to continue the planning process. It would continue to be, you know, our recommendation, but subject to the board's, you know, desire to ask town meeting for the full funding. But to go through the planning process, including hearings, and it's entirely possible we could find that the traffic volume meets the requirement, that we secure funding for the full amount, but that through the planning process and public feedback, we decide not to do the way. That's entirely a possible outcome. One thing I just, I just add on that issue is on the traffic counts, you know, we had a traffic count that was conducted during COVID. Those numbers, as expected, did not come close to their minimum requirement for, for signalization, but they were escalating, escalated using a factor that was applied, you know, in the area based on area traffic counts, that said that if you did a regular count like we're doing, you would probably come back and see it meet that number, but we won't know for sure until we do the actual count, which will happen.
Okay, so that'll be more. I just have two more questions. On Article 29, how, I remember when this was presented last meeting, I had a couple of questions on why they couldn't just mitigate on their own lot, number one, but number two, do they need conservation commission permission to have the runoff go down the culvert that goes into Martin's Pond?
Through you, Mr. Chairman. I believe they're going to require at a minimum conservation review if not approval, and they are close to a stream along the southern side of the property that I believe in and of itself will probably go through a wetland review. So they'll have to go through all the permitting process, but I do want you all to know, this only gives you the authority to grant the easement. You know, if the planning process yields something that you're not satisfied with, you're not obligated to grant that in this sense. You could see a plan that, you know, we could certainly ask that it be looked at to mitigate the amount of water coming off of the property before we, before we get into considering granting.
Or maybe also for them to figure out how they, they'll go around our, you know, that they could do it on their own, their own lot. And then my last.
You want to respond?
Just one more thing to share. I do think one of the limitations is that their, the paved area of their property, I believe is right up to the property line. I think that's part of the challenge, the amount of parking that they're relying on behind the property for the operation of business. From what I recall, nearly every square foot was paved and used for parking, so that's probably part of the challenge. So, but I, that's not an official, that's more just my own casual observation, but we'll have to, we'll have to vet through with them.
Yeah, because to me, that doesn't make sense because it's going underground anyway, so you could pave over it after you're done if this gets approved, you know? So let's dig it up and put whatever you need on your own lot instead of other people's, you know? I think that's even okay. But I guess that's a talk for another time. My last question for Article 33, it's my last question. Because this, to me, I think we got into a dialogue about this, it doesn't make sense to spend that huge amount of money to study an issue, but I'd like to see some data before we have to make a recommendation on precisely how many rides are given, and precisely how many, for $60,000 to study something, how many people are not getting a ride, and what type of ride? Are they not getting a ride to, you know, transit, or are they not getting a ride to a local medical place? Or are we not driving them to Boston, or, you know, the VA in Bedford or something like that? So I'd like to see some of that more, that information to really see how many people this affects, and how, and how many rides we are actually already providing, and where we're providing them to. But I think the study kind of is, understand people want that and how important it is, but if we could be using that money, if we're really going to throw that kind of money at it, can't we figure that out on our own about studying it and what are we studying? If we know there's that significant of a need, you know, that why are we throwing money at someone analyzing it? It doesn't really make a lot of sense to me. But I know, I know, that would be my request, if we get that data for when we are supposed to vote on our recommendation.
Through you, Mr. Chairman. So happy to invite folks to me to present the data, because there is quite a bit of data that's been gathered in regard to the utilization of the Ring and Ride program and where folks are going. These would primarily be medical transportation rides, and I do want to make clear, I'm expecting a very small portion of the fund will be for the assessment of the needs, surveying, which we can largely do in-house. I'm really expecting a significant chunk of that funding, more than half of it, to go into the direct provision of services, whether it's setting up some sort of a, you know, so it could be as simple as more hours for our current van drivers. It could be, you know, providing some sort of a subsidy for, you know, some sort of rideshare program. It could be providing an infrastructure that just matches people with rides, but we do ultimately, no, I only, I think I agree with you, I don't want to be studying this issue, I want to be providing solutions. And my fear candidly is that, you know, June 30th will come when Merrimack Valley will significantly scale back what it will do for transportation to town, or I should say, out of town, and we'll be left trying to figure out a solution. This is, you know, I think we admit that we don't know what that solution is, but that we want to have a source of funding available to, to augment it. And it could be that after a couple of months, we determine that there was utilization, but that the need wasn't really that strong, and that folks found other solutions, and that's entirely a possible solution as well, which is part of why I didn't want to tie up funding in a, a new position that may or may not be warranted. So we hope to deliver direct services with some of this funding in a pilot.
You all set, Ms. Menepelli? Mr. O'Leary?
I have no more questions. She had her five, and it was only five.
Okay. So are we ready for the motion?
Mr. Chair, I move to sign the June 12th, 2023 Spring Annual Town Meeting warrant.
Second.
Oh, she beat you. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Ms. Menepelli. Any further discussion?
None.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Ms. Menepelli?
Aye.
Mr. Studos?
Aye.
Do you have to pass those around now?
Yep. Thank you.
How many copies?
Two. Move on, Mr. Gobert, to the fiscal year 2024 municipal budget recommendations.
And Mr. Chairman, I did, did come through. I got the 733. I'm not very able to, I'm going to immediately put it back. Thank you.
Could be records or.
Prime, you would have to have a meeting.
Mr. Chairman, I don't know if you want to go ahead and legal bills or resolve this.
Mr. Wallner, can we have the motion for legal bills, please?
This is for 20 Elm Street, legal bills?
No. No, there's more, I think there's more. I know the page.
It's a lot of pages here.
I think it's all, it's after all the warrant articles.
Yes, it is.
Mr. Chair, I move to approve legal bills for March in the amount of $14,528.55, as follows. General, $12,560.55. Labor, $1,935. 20 Elm Street, $33, for a total of $14,528.55.
Second. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Ms. Menepelli?
Aye.
Mr. Studos?
Aye.
Do you want to continue on to approving?
Let's go.
Let's go for it. Mr. Chair, I move to approve the regular session minutes. Regular session minutes is written for the following date, April 24th, 2023.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Ms. Menepelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none. Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Ms. Menepelli?
Aye.
Mr. Studos?
Aye.
Everything else is really good, the warrants, so.
Back to you, Mr. Gobert, open you up. Unless you just want me to make up an agenda item, I don't have no time.
Mr. Chairman, we're all, should be good now. Share my screen.
Please.
Thank you.
Okay, so just a quick reminder, as we've done the past couple of years, we're sort of going to roll through the municipal and then the final budget, and then ask for a vote of the board to approve, and then we will, then we'll go to the actual budget hearing where the superior producer for any additional comment that folks might want to receive.
So just going through, again, this is the portion of the exercise where we talk about balancing the municipal budget, and we've talked about the available municipal revenue, The reductions that we've unfortunately had to make, ranging from firefighters to the additional van driver, youth services, the Parks and Recreation requests, which we know there's a need for, but we weren't able to fund. And then we were able to classify a number of individuals, requests into those one-time municipal costs, about $1.011 million on the bottom of that slide. Just a reminder of the things that are included in the budget, the assessing maps, the IT director position, which we've advertised for the two cruisers, the fire prevention day officer, the engineering for Martin's Pond maintenance, that's in addition to balances of previous fiscal year warrant articles, some training and education in DBW, additional building maintenance expenses that are anticipated, and then the library program coordinator. Again, a million, 11368 down below to be funded with free cash and one-time expenses, and that's in addition to funding we provided for the primary schools for their budget as well, for one-time expenses. Just a little bit about the position, because it initially started as outreach worker, and I know even I kind of fell into talking about it as an outreach worker, but these are bullets the library director provided, and just summarizing the request again, it's responsible for selecting, organizing, delivering, and evaluating events, programs for adult patrons, managing publicity materials on social media, website brochures, the newspaper to promote services and programs, identifying the needs of home lawn patrons and coordinating delivery to their place of residence, collaborating with other town departments to promote library services and resources, and contributing to consistency of operations by assisting all service desks in need, so helping over a need. The four items above, the portions of which are being done right now are being shared by staff who have other responsibilities during the course of the day, and I give the library a lot of credit, they're making it work, but I think that their feeling and their hope is to be able to, to do more, which is what, after seeing this request for the past four or five fiscal years, you know, my feeling is it was time to recommend that I get moving forward, especially given how it's been refined over the years. Another item, I just wanted to, you know, focus on the senior transportation. I do believe more resources are and will be necessary to assist. I just think the appropriate step right now is to pursue solutions under the pilot program on the article that we talked about just a few minutes ago. you know, my feeling is it was time to recommend moving forward, especially given how it's been refined over the years. Another item, I just wanted to focus on the senior transportation. I do believe more resources are and will be necessary to assist. I just think the appropriate step right now is to pursue solutions under the pilot program on the article that we talked about just a few minutes ago. I just, I don't see us adding additional staff capacity to do this at this moment in time. I don't think that it would be the right move for us to make until we know, you know, what the need will be and, you know, how much is going to be expected of the town to fill in. Just a little bit about community outreach and communication, because I know that's a concern on the part of the board. You know, there are actions that we've taken to improve communication with the public. You know, we've restored that IT position, which won't provide direct communication, but really will help us improve the technology we're relying on. The website, we have made some updates to that, and it's been handled by the public services director in addition to myself and the administrative assistant. And I know she's kind of in the middle of a top-to-bottom review of the website. We've made some changes along the way, including updating the board committee page descriptions. Meeting notices are now linked with those board committee pages. We had folks who would click on a board or committee page, wonder why they couldn't find anything about committee notice, now they're able to do that. Putting a consolidated area together for social media accounts for folks who want to learn more about that, there's an area to get that off the website. There's improvements that are in the works too, which is improving the design and the notify resident functions to be included, something that the IT director, we expect to be able to help us with. An ADA statement related to town communications under review by the Commission on Disabilities. And the town clerks also reached out to all committees submitting approved to remind them that they need to submit approved minutes in a timely fashion. And we'll be following up on those that are missing minutes in their, in their files. So I'm going to stop there. I, we were able to do something, I credit Ms. Geldman for her efforts. You saw in the packet over the weekend, we actually were able to put the budget document itself in there. It's actually the first time we've been able to do that in the nine years I've been here in town, so we've had to sort of scramble it together after the budget hearing has occurred, once things have been finalized. I want to just acknowledge that Gloria put a lot of time into getting that in place so you could see it heading into tonight's meeting, you could see where the, you know, where the department requests were by the time the administrator recommended, the recommendation stood, and how it will look in the warrant, should it go forward. So I'm going to stop, we're not, we are at the hour of the hearing, but we're not quite into the hearing, you know, portion of the discussion. The board is prepared to move forward. I did, I did prepare a motion. I know we've had a lot of discussion on all of these items. I know that there are a lot of concerns that we all have. And in the budget hearing, I'm going to talk more about what we weren't able to do and talk in more detail both for municipal and school requests, because, you know, I know we focus on what we are going to do, but there's a lot that we couldn't do, there's going to be a lot of challenge in the next few years. So I'll stop there, Mr. Chairman.
Thank you, Mr. Gobert. Any questions?
I want a comment.
Or a comment?
Just a comment in relation to the library position. Sharon, you're doing a fantastic job, and your staff, with what you have to work with, and I wholeheartedly endorse this position and look forward to more outreach and more programming, and congratulations for what you've already done. Appreciate it very much. Look forward to the position being filled. Just a comment?
And on our website, I think it's great that we're going to improve that, and I'm glad we're going to work towards that. It'd be nice if, even if all we did was to just have a portal to the school, to the safety, because we have different websites for the town that are just kind of spread out. And as the town resident, I want to go to the North Reading website, and even if it's just a portal, I want to see everything in one place. You know, so I understand the school committee has their own website, but it'd be nice if we had a link there that would get people there. And, you know, someday integrate it. Other communities do integrate it all together. That's way down the line. But just having a portal where people can find the other websites in town would be a good thing for residents to be able to find.
We do have a button linking to public schools, but we don't have a public safety, so that's something we can look down to.
Great, thank you. Okay.
Your motion?
Oh, yeah, sorry. Where am I? Yep, okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend the fiscal 2024 operating budget in the following amounts as proposed by the town administrator. Municipal fiscal year 24 budget, $19,291,970. School fiscal year 24 budget, $37,319, sorry, $37,319,595. Fiscal year 24 fixed cost, $23,660,145. And fiscal year 24 enterprise funds, $7,778,880. Their total budget of $87,342, sorry.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Wallner?
Aye.
Mrs. Menepelli?
Aye.
Mr. Studos?
Mr. Chairman, through you, if it's okay, I, we can go right into the budget hearing.
Do I have to read a notice?
There is a hearing notice, I think, was it, does it, do you have it there?
No, I have. Notice this fiscal year 2024 budget informational hearing. The North Reading Select Board does hereby notify the residents of the town of North Reading that an in-person and virtual informational hearing on the fiscal year 2024 budget for the town of North Reading, anticipated to be considered at the Spring Annual Town Meeting on Monday, June 12th, 2023, will be held on Monday, May 8, 2023, at 8:00 p.m. Room 14, Town Hall, 235 North Street, and via Zoom technology.
Zoom sharing the screen, Mr. Chair, through you. And I have a PowerPoint presentation that will look similar to what you've seen in prior years, but as I mentioned, we've had a lot of conversation in the financial planning team, and there's expected to be additional conversation relative to the needs and how we support those needs in future years. So feel indulged, I'll go through this presentation quickly and take it from there. So just a little bit about our goals, you know, continuing that collaboration between the town and school leaders through the financial planning team, looking to maintain our service levels to the extent as possible, and where necessary to modify or add services to respond to what the community's needs are, trying to minimize that impact of health insurance upon the operating budget, because it is such a significant expense. And among the fixed costs, it's one of the few we can attempt to have control over, largely because of the PFA structure that we have worked collaboratively with our employees on. And for this year, a goal of incorporating multiple funding streams to submit a balanced budget to town meeting, as we've talked about in many meetings. So just showing you how the revenue was applied for fiscal year 2024. It's about 46% of it going to the school department, and that does not include the vocational and Essex, North Shore, Essex Agricultural Assessments. About 30% of it are $24.5 million going for fixed costs, and about 24% going to municipal expenses at 19, just under $19.6 million. So that just gives the residents a quick, you know, visual as to how your, how your tax dollars and the assistance that we receive from the state and how we're going to use are spent. Just looking at how we.
Question?
What do you mean by fixed costs?
Thank you. So we're talking about our debt service, so not debt service for projects like the middle high school, which was a proposition to have debt exclusion, but for building repairs, for equipment that we need to borrow, for vehicles. We're talking about our assessment by the Middlesex County Retirement System for our pensions that are for the public sector employees. That doesn't just get paid for through payroll deductions, it's also funded by an assessment that the town must pay on an annual basis. We're talking about, as I mentioned, the vocational school, to which we send students, and to the nearby agricultural school as well, that we send students to. We're talking about health insurance, which is a huge driver of expense for us year in and year out, and as I'm sure nearly every resident sees, is increasing in percentage points of 10 or more, depending upon the fiscal year. So those are the major drivers. With smaller drivers, you know, property casualty insurance, you know, like anybody with their own property, we have insurance as well that comes with a premium. And, you know, all of the different aspects of how government works in North Reading is, you know, generally insured and is a significant premium in the hundreds of thousands of dollars. How was that for a quick overview?
Thank you.
Just quickly, I mean, in the past, we talked about a two-thirds, one-third, you know, school municipal government. We divvy up the fixed costs, it still comes out about that?
Roughly, yeah, we went through a meeting update five years ago, and our percentages are not far off.
Right, it's about the same.
And you'll see in the next slide here, it's just under two-thirds going to schools and just over one-third going to municipal, when you take off the top, the fixed costs. You know, we, we used to sort of just go with a percentage, and I think the past probably four years, it's been more of, okay, where are we, where is each side, so to speak, at? Is the municipal government, you know, budget, how bad is it on that end? How bad is it for the school end? I think I mentioned here, you know, when we got to the conclusion of the budget process, some moves that we made freed up funding that, you know, could have been directly available for municipal purposes, and as I think I mentioned in the last meeting, we felt the schools were facing a much more difficult challenge, and that it would be better served to go to the schools. So we have percentages, but we try to work together in the financial planning process to, to make sure we get, you know, to something that we can all live with, but generally is not something that meets all of the requests that have been asked for. I'll get to that momentarily. So these are the key expenditure drivers, as I mentioned. You can see the breakdown there, you know, that health insurance over $5 million. The county retirement assessment over $5 million, both of them growing. County retirement is under an obligation to fully fund its long-term liabilities by, I think it's 2036 at this point, but I may have the year wrong. So they have an aggression funding, aggressive funding schedule they require to follow to catch up, you know, from decades of underfunding. But you can see the significant costs that we're talking about that are all but out of our control. The little bit of control we can have over health insurance, we've sort of exerted through the PFA program, we've done it collaboratively with our employees. A little bit about our reserves, you know, we are among many communities, you know, we're fortunate that we've been able to put away quite a bit over the years and not had to draw on, to draw on it. You know, our free cash, again, certified the early part of this calendar year is, again, a healthy number, over $5 million. Our stabilization funds are total over $5 million, it's about $5.5 million. We have a significant infrastructure stabilization fund for water as well, and we have some smaller funds that are available, so we sit in a good position. And I think that that's really important as we look at the potential economic turbulence that we may see in the country over the next few years. So, well, well, it's not, not necessarily raining here today. We talked about use of rainy day funds. What we did see in this budget process is that we have significant needs that our revenue stream cannot maintain with, even prior to the potential negative economic impacts. So, you know, that's highlighted here through the shortfalls. We received total requests, I'm sorry, I see it didn't total up quite right on the bottom there, but the request for, you know, municipal expenditures at over $21 million, we only had about $19.6 million to fund. The schools, 37684, that was a modified level service request. Their actual full-on strategic plan level request was actually higher than that. So significant, you know, gaps in terms of what the funding needs are. So, you know, when we look, you know, to the highlights in the budget, you know, there's a number of things in the municipal budget that I've talked about. We maintain the public services position, the grant writer position, the IT director position, that assessors mapping, which is really important information for the community, replacing the two marked cruisers, adding that fire department, fire prevention day officer position, the library program coordinator position, and funding that additional building maintenance. Unfunded, four firefighters are requested, new positions, one per shift that the fire chief has asked for, and while we hope to make progress towards staffing needs by going to the regional dispatch, 911, this request was, is intended to be above and beyond that ultimately. You know, we had to level fund the seasonal building inspectors hours, and while we think we can sort of make that work for the upcoming fiscal year, you know, uptake in activity is going to be very, very difficult for us. You know, funding Martin's Pond maintenance, we were able to rely on some prior years and still do a little bit of funding.
Mr. Chairman, just in relation to the seasonal building inspectors hours, that department is very cash positive. Why, again, why, why can't we fund, you know, we're generating significant amounts of revenue through that department. We should be able to at least fund it sufficiently to keep generating that revenue and meet the needs of the community who are coming in for permits and acquire the inspections. And I forget, I forget what the number was.
Yeah, it's not a huge number, and we are still funding the seasonal hours, we're just not increasing them. We haven't been able to fill the position in recent years, that's also part of.
I know that's part of the challenge too, but.
So, you know, I think our vision is to work with the building inspector to figure out what's the right model for that, what can we do to try to get it filled? And if we need to make an increase to it, we have the opportunity to sell it for all, and I think that we are prepared to do that. I think one of the variables though, is, you know, there is a bit of a drop-off in what's happening in the economy from a structural standpoint too, so trying to balance that. We were forever at a 1.5-ish department with Mr. DeSalvo as the assistant inspector. We're now at two full-time inspectors right now, including Mr. Noel and Mr. Anzalone. This was in addition to that, and we still do have hours in place. If we feel like it's not working, or continuing to see a struggle, or there's an issue, we'll look to potentially raise the wage if we have to. And if we need supplemental funding, we'll be back.
Can we raise the wage also significantly to attract?
I don't know that they've re-advertised with an increased rate of wage recently. I don't remember when they last advertised for it, I'm not sure if it.
I'm not sure when.
Yeah, it may have been prior to November.
They break it for the whole year, I think you were making that out last year.
Yeah. So we'll look to do something with it though, and if there's a need, we'll be back talking about it. And certainly, we talked about the band driver, the labor, and the youth services expenses. We just weren't able to recommend funding for this point in time. You know, looking, we had to fund some, you know, fixed costs for free cash instead of raising appropriate, you know, Snow and I stepped in the town school and career and retirement obligation and capital improvement plan funding. In a perfect world, we wouldn't need to do that, we'd just be able to sort of hold that free cash separate and not funded. Talking about the schools, and this is directly from the school's budget presentation, you know, they included funds to meet contractual obligations for employees and unions, addressing their increased fixed operational costs, contracted services, plus utilities. They were able to maintain and add staff to maintain educationally sound student to the rate ratios, continuing academic support systems for a year's learning loss, maintaining adequate health and safety services for students, staff, and the community, addressing the social, emotional, mental health needs of all students, and enhancing a creative leadership model within the district to support all educators. They have that very successful one-to-one program down grades K through 12, and the associated operations, properly maintaining the school buildings and their surrounding campuses. So while they, I think, you know, have a budget that they put in place, you know, to move forward in the next fiscal year, we've also heard, you know, what's unfunded in the school department. A 1.0 full-time employee, school adjustment counselor, a 1.5 full-time employee, academic interventionist or coach. You see there's a grade level position, a digital learning specialist, and just under a halftime basic academic teacher. And between those two, that's some $360,000 worth of staffing involved that, you know, just was unfunded, never mind the other, the other needs. So there's, you know, significant challenges in terms of the needs as well, never mind maintaining the current services. Trying to do something I haven't done in my tenure, other than maybe a casual statement, but just to talk about fiscal year 2025, next year. Our ability to carry the FY '23 budget into '24, as I think you saw through this process, was significantly strained. We arrived at a balanced budget for fiscal year 2024, but it was difficult town-wide, both for school and heaviness of budget processing. We had significant reliance on one-time funds for one-time costs that would ideally be funded from raising appropriate, such as taxes, state, or receipts. I think that is something that's going to come up as a challenge. Not just for the requests that you saw that we weren't able to fund, but for maintaining our current level of services into fiscal year 2025. A big factor in this is new growth. We saw a lot of new growth leading into the pandemic. We sustained some of it with people still working at homes and the real estate market in, you know, throughout the pandemic, and as we come out of the pandemic, we've been notified that some of that new growth in full day will slow down, and we're going to have challenges when we get to the next fiscal year. I know the financial planning team, you know, wants me to share that with you. I feel about the need to share that with you and with the community. And I know that from the financial planning team's discussions, they'd like to see that shared to some extent at town meeting as well, when we're talking about the budget. We did get to a balanced budget, and that is what is before here, what you voted on earlier, but there are certainly pressures, and I think that, you know, the public for whom this hearing is being held, you know, needs to hear that, you know, there are definitely pressures that we are feeling, you know, continues to be for fiscal year 2025. are definitely pressures that we are feeling, continue to feel for fiscal year 2025, that from which we're going to have to look for revenue. Thank you, Mr. Chairman.
Okay. I'm going to open up the questions from, anyone from the public? Before I move on? Anyone on the line?
I'm not seeing anyone, Mr. Chairman. There are a few attendees, but I'm not seeing any questions.
Okay, then I will close that portion of the public hearing and move on to the board. Who would like to go first? Question, comment?
I'll just comment, you know, I, I did study up on the school, school, I went to the school website, looked up, you know, student-teacher ratios, and of all the communities it listed down, we were the best at 10.9 to 1. And some might say, well, let's stretch that and make it 11 to 1, 12 to 1, but along with that is directly related to performance of the students and the quality of the education. So that will be, next year, we're going to start to see that number start to slide if we don't start to bring in new revenue. I think it's one of the most important numbers that I came to learn by looking at their website. And so we have to keep that in our mind, is that the schools are going to have to start dialing back, even like, like they have now, they're going to have to start dialing back because it's big money to have teachers, and that's the easiest place to find money. So as we consider future projects and how that works out, this is, this is going to be the place where we're going to feel it the most, and if we don't have new growth to support our schools. And once you get into that vicious cycle of reducing down the performance of your schools, everybody gets affected because the value of your town goes down, desirability of your town goes down, and the property values go down. So it's a long-term effect. So I just want to point that out, very important that we think about that going forward. I'm sure come fall, we'll be talking about this more when it comes to the wastewater project as well. Thank you.
Question, comment?
I just have a comment too, and I, I wholeheartedly agree with that, and I think the vulnerable portion of our population, we see, I'm struggling with the $60,000 assessment. If we had money to throw at things like that, for our vulnerable population, elderly and our kids, our students, are the population that we need to focus in on for sure. And I think that now it's been several rounds of budget that we've had to scramble and try to figure it out, and try to figure out what, what can go by the wayside, and what should we, what do we, what's our need to implement, and we're still struggling to make that bottom line balance, and we've had that for so long, including with the Pulte growth. So he's staring us in the face, and I really do think we need to, you know, come up with some, come up with some, some planning that generates new growth for sure.
Mr. O'Leary?
Well, echo the comments that were made, but in addition to that, if we could get down to some of the specifics, you know, you're looking at health insurance benefits for our employees, you know, this year, what are we budgeting, eight and a half?
Uh, nine.
Nine percent, nine percent we're budgeting. But in actuality, the increase was significantly more. The, the increase in that particular lineup for our health insurance was initially at 16%, and we got it down to 14 and a half, and then 12, and through negotiations, you know, we're able to, with, to get it down a little bit closer to the, to the 9%. But that being said, that's the baseline we start from moving forward for next year. And depending upon our experiences, it could catastrophically go even more. Fortunately, because we have the PFA, and we've been planning for such significant increases, we have to increase in proportionally, more than the two and a half percent that we're raising through Prop 2.5. So, you know, we have to cover our employees, we have to cover our expenses, the cost of maintaining the physical plant and infrastructure, as we've seen earlier through the capital improvement process, you know, the infrastructure that needs to be addressed. We're talking about needs in all of our departments. It just doesn't fall within the confines of Prop 2.5. We've been able to manage it extremely well over the last few years. We've had some new growth, particularly, specifically the Pulte project, but even that's been delayed now, so that the revenue stream that we were anticipating is being absorbed more quickly and being diminished as, as it comes in. So I want to applaud the efforts of the policy team as far as, you know, getting this message out here to let the public know, you know, that this balancing and wrestling every year needs to be communicated a little bit better by us to the public, because it's going to come home to roost shortly. And student-teacher ratios are absolutely going to be impacted going forward, and we want to minimize that. So the only way you minimize that is provide yourself with some opportunity for new growth. And, you know, how do we do that? We're going to have a lot of discussion over the next few months in relation to a proposal that's being put forward, as a means by which we can do that, and the public's going to have to make an informed decision as to whether or not they believe we can afford to do it or afford not to do it. So I look forward to the discussion, I look forward to the input, more input, and people understand, they know what it's costing to operate their households now. It's not much different. But we're an $87 million business here, you know, but we're a nonprofit, and we're capped as though there are no amount of revenue that we can, we can generate. So, you know, how do we together get through it and try and maintain a significant level of services that people come to expect and enjoy? And it's at risk, so we just want to let people know that and look forward to the discussion in the next few months.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. Mr. O'Leary?
I, I should add too, and I think you told us before, because this has been the way it's been since I've been on the board, I think this, this team effort was instituted by Mr. Mosseri to have this school, school finance and select board get together at these regular meetings.
Actually, it was, actually, it was Mrs. Bailey, and Mr. Mosseri and myself, right?
So I just want to, I, I also don't think that people recognize, and Mrs. Galvin and the TAA, and all the, all the, all the people that come together on a regular basis way before this is packaged up, and they're painful discussions of what do you owe, we need this, what do you need, but they're polite discussions about, you know, the future and the budget, and they're not, there's, there's not, people feel very strongly in those discussions, and people have to go back to the drawing board to figure things out, but they're not insulting to one another, they're not rude to each other, it's team effort, working together to make this happen for the town. And I, I also want to acknowledge that because we have the superintendent of schools, we have the chair, the vice chair of the school, school committee that are in attendance, we have finance, financial, finance committee team members that come and, come and attend, we have, I'm missing the business manager of the school. And, you know, putting the, that, it's a lot of effort, and it's a lot of meetings, and they're, they meet on a regular basis way before the budget comes to fruition, to see where we're at and to go over these issues that we're having and to talk about some of these capital, capital projects, are they going to be beneficial, are they going to be helpful, are they not going to be helpful, should we be focused in on them? So the, the discussion is broad, and again, it's not an easy thing when you have to say, we can't afford that, or we're not going to be able to do that, go back to the drawing board, but it isn't rude and insulting. It's, it's a good team effort because we're all on the same page, you know, trying to make these numbers work. And, and also, I have to say, I have to acknowledge Mrs. Galvin too, because she just kind of jumped right in there, and everything that has been provided, provided by you in the context of those reasons has been extremely helpful to us. So thank you, Murdo, and you've done just kind of jumped right into it, so that's all.
Yeah, and I'll add, I'll add a few comments on that. So I agree with everything. And we are though in a cycle that we got here because of good, but it can also come down like Mr. Wallner said, and here's why. So since 2017 early, average property value in North Reading is up 30 to 50%. So that I can tell you is because when any home lists, and you look at it, and you go under schools, no matter where it is, it's a nine out of 10, or eight out of, across the board, it's really high. For better or for worse, there is a documented direct correlation that the better the schools, the higher the property value. Unless you are like a Waldham that has a lot of business, which we will never be, where it gets its property value because of everything else it has, and it's proximity to some nice private schools as well. So I think though that it is important for us to start thinking about now that come next year, there, the financial planning team kicked a lot of cans down the road. Actually, we didn't kick them, we like threw them, put them in a bazooka because we couldn't get rid of them fast enough. But we've hit a point where some of them cannot be, cannot be kicked anymore. There are certain projects where, I mean, there's literally sinkholes, it's like, that's it. We've hit their end of the road, literally, on some of those. And I think it's something where, you know, forget sewer, forget anything else, just in general, if we don't come to revenue, there's going to be two options given to the town. We cut or increase, you know, for the schools, you know, the worst thing possible, it seems like I've learned now, is to have to increase class sizes, you know, have less teachers, or raise more money. And we know what that is. No one wants to say it out loud, but it happens. The dreaded over two and a half. And then the decision that the town is going to have to make as a whole is that, do you want to continue, and this is what I mean about that vicious circle, do you want to continue to see a thriving school that has a lot of what a lot of people have to offer, which then translates into towns? I think that when I moved here in 2017, there were two homes listed over a million, there is no new construction in North Reading under 1.3, it does not exist. If there's a plot of land over 2,500 square feet, there's a house on it for over 1.2 million. So I'm just trying to say that those tax revenues has helped, but I feel that it is important for us and financial planning, which I'm on, this is why we're going to start talking about it more. I know in the finance committee, they've always kind of raised these questions, and, you know, maybe school and select board, because times have been a little bit better, haven't done as much, but I think there's going to be choices to make that if we don't find more revenue, it's a zero-sum game. You know, we, we need to find more money, another way, and the only other way is through taxes, which I am not really supportive in general of, but I feel that, you know, we, we need to start thinking about this now, because I, I think, again, one thing you didn't mention is that all those funds I learned before I was in the select board, I thought, well, we have all this money, why can't we use it? No, no. Funds are very specific based on state law, what you can do with it. You know, just because we have 6 million here, doesn't mean we can just do whatever we want with it. Because I used to think, you know, like, right, maybe you have multiple savings accounts, why not? Just grab it from wherever you want. So I do appreciate that we, you know, Mr. Gobert, that you kind of project out, because I do think it's important, because I think that we will get inevitable, as I've learned being in town government, we will inevitably get next year, if we have to make hard choices on cutting, no one told us about that. It's going to happen unfortunately, but at least we can go back and rewind the tape and say, we tried. So anything else? Would you like to add? No? Okay.
Good to see.
So if that's it, I will, you closed the hearing? Correct? We will close the hearing and move on. And next is recommending the, the recommendations for the warrant articles. So Mr. Gobert, are you just going to go through them all, one by one?
Mr. Chairman, through, there, there are, I think, they're in the share file folder, they're also, I think, in hard copy before Mr. Wallner. I have, I have folded, I don't know if it's coming through in the printed copy, what I believe the recommendation should, should be, so if you, I, I know there was some feedback on one article, and maybe you want to move that to recommend it, you know, in that certain fine, we want to hear more about the transportation numbers, but that's not so we're really talking about that when we get to it. So I, I'm not, I wasn't intending to go through the warrant again, I can if you want to, otherwise we could just read the motions.
No, I don't. I don't think we need to. We can just, you know, read it if everybody, any questions? I'm going to stop and move on. Okay?
Adam, do you want to turn the lights back on again?
Thank you. If we can get you a stipend at some point, I'll try.
Yeah, what's what you get.
Same as ours.
Yeah, yeah, you get the same stipend we get.
There's a lot over here.
All right.
Okay. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article 1, fiscal year 2023 budget amendment.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those, well, I can do it. All those in favor?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting, Article 2, 2, fiscal year 2023 capital budget amendment.
Second. Trying to beat Mr. O'Leary.
Oh, okay.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Menipelli. Any further discussion?
What, so was, Article 2 was what, recommend that coming?
Recommend.
Recommend at town meetings. So there's a revised set of the motions to reflect the renumbering in the, if you back out.
I'm sorry, I'm sorry, I said, I might have said that wrong.
No, I think you said it right. I'm reading wrong.
Okay. Did I say it right?
You did.
On second.
Still second.
Still second.
Still second.
Any more further discussion? Okay. Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article 3, fiscal year 2023 capital budget amendment, synthetic turf athletic field. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 2, fiscal year 2023 capital budget amendment, synthetic turf field athletic field.
Second.
Article 3. Article 2 or Article 3?
Article 2.
Article 3.
Article 3.
Article 3. Article 2 we won't recommend. It should be recommended at town meeting, that was the correct vote, so it might have been an accident.
Hold on, Article 3, I have Article 3 here, snow and ice deficit.
Are you in the meeting packet? And if you are, back out, and then go back into the revised motions, because we had to change the numbering with the deletion of the article.
Okay.
So that could be one.
Final.
It says the, it says finally.
Perfect.
That's what I was looking at when I questioned the Article 2.
What he said was the right action.
Yeah. You took the correct action, just it wasn't what was written. Nice job.
I think he said, I approve Article 2.
He was very intuitive. He knew.
I was on the game.
I think you said it right.
I thought I didn't say it right.
So someone second it?
Sure.
Thank you. We have them out, hold on.
Yeah, some of us don't have the advantage of the renumbering warrant. So is it possible that Mr. Wallner moves to approve an article that he said what the article is?
I think I did on the previous, on 3 I did.
You may have.
I may not have done that.
In this one, it's impossible to hear anybody.
I'll speak up louder then.
So Mr. Wallner, if you can please indulge.
Do you want to view Article 3 again?
Please.
Okay. Article 3, fiscal year 2023 capital budget amendment, synthetic turf athletic field. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 2, fiscal year 2023 capital budget amendment, synthetic turf athletic field.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay.
Article 4, fund fiscal year 2023 snow and ice deficit. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 3, fund fiscal year 2023.
Article 4, it should say Article 4.
Sorry?
It should be Article 4.
Did I say Article 3?
That's what it says, but it should say 4.
I thought I said Article 4.
No. And the motion says that.
Because the motions are going to be for the former one, so you have to fix it when you make the motion.
When you make the, you can see right there in the wording, it says, I need to recommend Article, it says Article 3, it should be Article 4.
Oh, I did miss that, I'm sorry. Okay, I'll start again. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 4, fund fiscal year 2023 snow and ice deficit.
Second.
Recommend at town meeting?
No, just recommend.
Oh, I'm sorry.
Recommend. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
It's not even that late.
You get the same thing. I'm going to lose my.
All of these have the wrong article number on them.
So he's going to have to correct that one too.
I guess by changing.
So he, he has a correct verse, what he's reading.
Well, that doesn't look like.
That isn't up there. You look up there, you're on Article 5, and it says Article 4 in the wording.
Yeah.
Oh, so it only got changed in one spot.
Yeah, right. I think we voted Article 3 wrong.
All right. See, now we got it.
I think we voted Article 3 wrong.
No, we did, he corrected it.
He corrected it.
He corrected it.
I did correct it.
Yes.
And we undid it.
Yes.
But then he voted it again on Article 2, so.
Oh, my goodness. That's fine, tell me until next one.
I'm losing my clerkship foot job here. 2 was right.
You're not getting fired. You've got to keep practicing till you get it right. And then we're going to applaud your efforts and let you continue to do it.
I'm going to resign in humiliation. Okay. Article 5 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 5 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Capital Improvement Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 6 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 6 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 7 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Stabilization Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 7 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 8 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article 8 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to Solid Waste Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 9 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to Water Stabilization Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article 9 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to Water Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
This is good, I get to referee a tie, who says second first?
Well.
Who was ever closer.
Trying to give Mr. O'Leary a little break there.
Article 10 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Participating Fund Arrangement Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 10 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Participating Fund Arrangement Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 11 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to School District Reserve Fund for Unanticipated Unbudgeted Costs for Special Education Out of District Tuition or Transportation. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article 11.
No, just recommend.
That should be recommend.
Just recommend.
I'm sorry. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 11 Fiscal Year 2023 Transfer Funds to School District Reserve Fund for Unanticipated Unbudgeted Costs for Special Education Out of District Tuition or Transportation.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 12 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds for Legal Expenses 20 Elm Street. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article 12 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds for Legal Expenses 20 Elm Street.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 13 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Cover Grant Deficits. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 13 Fiscal Year 2023 Appropriate Funds to Cover Grant Deficits.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 14 Create Opioid.
Time out. Mr. Gilberto?
Thank you, Mr. Chairman. If the board is satisfied with the explanation provided with regard to Article 14, given the feedback from town council, I'd urge you to consider voting to recommend the article. If it still has more questions, certainly you recommend at a town meeting, but we've either written the recommendations prior to the final language coming in, so.
Why don't you, so you want to recommend?
If folks are.
I'm going to read the article and then I'll have a chance to talk.
I'll read that, yeah. Okay. Article 14 Create Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 14 Create Opioid Settlement Stabilization Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Is the board satisfied with that? To recommend?
Yep.
Okay. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 15 Prior Year Bills. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 15 Prior Year Bills.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 16 Select Town Officers. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 16 Select Town Officers.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 17 I move to, I'm sorry, hear and act on reports of town officers and committees. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 16 Hear and Act on Reports. Sorry, yeah, sorry. I'll start that again. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 17 Hear and Act on Reports of Town Officers and Committees.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 18 Increase Senior Tax Rebate. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 18 Increase Senior Tax Rebate.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 19 Fiscal Year 2024 Operating Budget. Mr. Chair, I move to, we don't have a recommendation.
Should be recommend.
Recommend. I'll start that again. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 19 Fiscal Year 2024 Operating Budget.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 20 Fiscal Year 2024 One-Time Fire Department Recruit and Paramedic Training. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 20 Fiscal Year 2024 One-Time Fire Department Recruit and Paramedic Training.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 21 Fund Retirement Obligations. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend at, I'm sorry, I move to recommend Article 21 Fund Retirement Obligations.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 22 50 Fiscal Year 2024 Appropriate Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 22 Fiscal 2024 Appropriate Funds to Other Post-Employment Benefits Liability Trust Fund.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? All those in favor?
Aye.
I like the little tennis, you guys are going back and forth with the second.
Well, she can give me a break. I appreciate it.
Article 23 Authorized Treasurer to Enter Into Compensating Balance Agreements. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 23 Article Authorized Treasurer to Enter Into Compensating Balance Agreements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 24 Rescind Authorization of Borrow. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend at town meeting Article 24 Rescind Authorization of Borrow.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 25 Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Expenditures. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 25 Fiscal Year 2024 Capital Expenditures.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 26 Fiscal Year 2024 Fund Town Building Repairs. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 26 Fiscal Year 2024 Fund Town Building Repairs.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Seeing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 27 Fiscal Year 2024 Authorized Chapter 90 Highway Construction. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 27 Fiscal Year 2024 Authorized Chapter 90 Highway Construction.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article 28 Authorized Director of Public Works to Accept Easements. Mr. Chair, I move to, I don't have a.
Should be recommended.
Recommend. Repeat that. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 28 Authorized Director of Public Works to Accept Easements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 29 Grant Easement of Zero Wilma Road, Map 13, Lot 131. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 29 Grant Easement on Zero Wilma Road, Map 13, Lot 13.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
I don't think we have enough information to make a vote on this one.
Anyone else?
This is just, town meeting giving us authorization to do it, doesn't mean we have to grant it. So that's why I don't have a problem. I agree, at least we look into it. Can they do it on their own property? If they can't, it doesn't make sense, we'll be able to move forward if town meeting improves it. But still ultimately, guys, with the board.
Mr. Walner?
I'm good with that. I mean, I agree, I think there's enough safeguards where even, even if this authorization is given, just, I think just that there's enough steps where if it's, if everything doesn't go according to how it should, I mean, it's not, you know, it's not going to go through, so. Well, in that case, I will, you know, I will take the liberty of taking a roll. Mr. O'Leary?
I have any further discussion?
No, I'm not going to vote to recommend it.
Okay.
We just don't have enough information, especially on the conservation aspect, but I'm one of four tonight.
Mr. O'Leary?
Aye.
Mr. Walner?
Aye.
Mr. Studo's aye?
No.
No, Mrs. Menni-Pelli is no. Motion carries.
Okay. Article 30 Appropriate Money for Historical Buildings. Mr. Chair, I move to, I'm going to recommend. Article 30 Appropriate Money for Historical Buildings.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Now we caught up, the articles are late. Article 31 Fiscal Year 2024 Fund Consultant Fees for Compliance with Section 3A of MGL's Chapter 48 MBTA Communities' Requirements. Mr. Chair, I move to recommend Article 31 Fiscal Year 2024 Fund Consultant Fees for Compliance with Section 3A of Mass General Law, Chapter 48 MBTA Communities' Requirements.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Article 32 Fiscal Year 2024 Fund American with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, Phase 2. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 32 Fiscal Year 2024 Fund American with Disabilities Act Self-Evaluation and Transition Plan, Phase 2.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mrs. Menni-Pelli. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Article 33 Fiscal Year 2024 Appropriate Funds for Elderly Disabled Needs Assessment and Transportation Piling. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend Article 33 Fiscal Year 2024 Appropriate Funds for Disability Needs Assessment and Transportation Piling.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Walner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion? Mrs. Menni-Pelli?
I just think we need more data, more information before we make a recommendation on that, that type of an expenditure, which is significant.
Mr. Walner?
I'd like to hold off for more data.
I thought the town administrative gave sufficient explanation tonight that we would give you flexibility depending upon what the needs assessment tells us, and we'd give them funds to increase the hours for the van driver if necessary, and then make adjustments in October, so I'm all set.
Well, I'm, I'm in your camp, but it looks like it's split, so why don't, why don't we try to get a recommended town meeting, when then, you know, Chair Gonzalez will be back?
Okay. All right, Mr. Chair, Chairman, I move to.
Do we have to withdraw the motion, excuse me?
I'll withdraw my second.
Thank you.
Move to amend to make a recommendation at town meeting?
No, just I withdraw my second, so there's no second to the motion, then move to make another motion.
Okay.
All right, Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article thirty-three fiscal year 2024 appropriate funds for disability needs assessment and transportation pilot.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Will that be enough time, Mr. Gilberto, to be able to get that data to us?
I believe so, it's been presented in different forums over the past few months. Unfortunately, not here, so we can have that presented as a agenda item as, I think as soon as the twenty-second.
Oh, that's great.
Okay.
Thank you.
Any further?
Okay.
Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article thirty-four increasing revolving fund limit elder services. Mr. Chairman, I move to recommend at town meeting Article thirty-four increasing revolving fund limit elder services.
Second.
Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mrs. Manny Pelly. Any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Article thirty-five citizens petition. Mr. Chair, I move to not recommend Article thirty-five citizens petition.
Second.
Mr. Gilberto?
I do feel, you know, with explanation, I didn't lightly offer that recommendation, but based on my conversation with town council, the motion is outside the preliminary town meeting, that certainly can be considered, I should say the article, the citizen petition article that's outside the preliminary town meeting, any action would be purely advisory to the parties involved, and that's why I elected to propose not recommend, but consult with the citizens.
Okay, anyone else? Mr. O'Leary, you seconded that, correct?
I did.
Okay.
Enthusiastically.
I saw that. Motion by Mr. Wallner, second by Mr. O'Leary. Any further discussion?
Just, I assume we were having, we'll make the recommendations, but we also had, oh, that was just budget information. We'll be having another hearing on these warrant articles?
We will, I'm soon to bring up the date for that, but yes, there will be a hearing if we advertise on the mark where the petitioner could.
So if I happen to hear something else, I can always change my mind.
Yeah. Seems to me so vague in terms of what it's, what is it a type of?
I don't think I'm going to hear anything that's going to change my mind, but.
Okay.
Sorry, that was still in cheek.
You're good, okay. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. That was thirty-five, okay. Let's move on to.
Mr. Chairman?
Yes.
Just very briefly, with regard to the warrant article hearing, we have, I believe, agreed to a next board meeting date of Monday, May twenty-second.
Yep.
I'm going to propose to the board that we consider the next board meeting occurring on Monday, June fifth after that, and that that be considered for the warrant article informational hearing. I offer that for two reasons. The first is it'll allow us to have the informational hearing just a week before town meeting to get people engaged, you know, pretty close to the date rather than three weeks out from it. And secondly, based upon the mailing schedule, we're going to provide the document to the printer on Friday of this week, it'll probably arrive in folks' homes about ten days after that, nine days after that. So I'll give them a couple of weeks to look at it, digest if they so choose, and then gather their questions to come ask at the hearing. I did talk with the chair, I know she's not up this evening, but I believe she is available on June fifth.
So, so, Mr. Gilberto, then we would have the town meeting on the twelfth?
It remains on the twelfth, yes.
And then we would also have a board meeting on the nineteenth?
I expect you probably would just based upon how the business of the town functions.
Okay.
That's probably going to be a warrant, a wide range hearing, I guess.
The nineteenth?
The nineteenth.
Let's, let's, I'm sorry, excuse me.
Does that work?
Well, isn't that a holiday?
Oh, yeah.
Don't celebrate the nineteenth?
It can be, you're right.
It's June.
And also, just so you know, Mr. Chair, the fifth is the prom night, so senior prom, so.
A conflict for some folks.
It will be for me.
Okay.
Yeah, that's right.
I, for once, am not the one that has some kid-related thing, so, no problem.
Our other option is to, you know, we'll plan on.
Do without, that's your options. I welcome you.
We could still plan to have the hearing for the articles on the May twenty-second, when we plan to next meet.
So.
That could happen.
The way I see it is that as long as we have the information that some of the board members requested, so they can have their, make their final determinations on a couple of the articles, then I'm fine with the twenty-second.
Okay. And we can decide on the twenty-second how to handle the schedule.
Proceed, yeah. Okay.
So the fifth is out?
Yeah, can we go over that schedule again?
The fifth is out for right now, correct?
Sounds like I heard the finance director and at least one board member cannot make the fifth, so it may not be a great night for a meeting. We can't do the nineteenth, so we're going to have to go back to the drawing board on the schedule after May twenty-second, and we'll come up with it on the twenty-second. But I think it sounds like the hearing is going to need to be Monday, May twenty-second. And I'm, I'm fine with that, that's not inconsistent with how.
Well, why don't we leave it like that, and then at the same time, then Chairman Gonzalez can also weigh in on the other dates.
Yeah, yeah, but we'll have a hearing on the twenty-second.
Okay.
Great, thank you.
Public comment, anyone? Anyone on the, no, there's no, wow. Okay, let's move on. We did legal bills, we did the minutes. Mr. Gilberto, you're up.
I have no voice this evening.
Mr. Gilberto, you're done. So, board member report, and as, no, as is customary, we'll attach all the new business. Mr. O'Leary?
Just several things. The, first of all, congratulations to you for your reelection, and pleased that you're back.
Thank you.
Continue to join us, and based upon the time, I know I'm adding to it, but so far pretty good as far as, you know, sitting in here for the chair, new chair, you've done a fine job. But congratulations to you and the effort that you put forth to get reelected, and Mr. Carroll again, he ran a good campaign, and hopefully he gets involved moving forward, volunteers for some other boards, committees, or commissions, and find out how things work, and we would welcome his attendance. And again, I'd like to thank Chris Hayden, who was not successful in reelection to the Community Planning Commission, but, you know, Chris spent about twenty-five years volunteering his services to the community as a member of the Community Planning Commission, and there certainly has been a significant number of changes that have taken place over those twenty-five years, and he played a major role in a lot of what's taken place, and extremely grateful for his service and that of his family in allowing him to do so, and I hope he still stays engaged and can welcome Mr. Griffin to the Planning Commission. And then also, we've just ordered three firefighters?
Yes.
So we'd like to welcome three new members of the firefighting fire department. We need the, we need the help. We need the help, we need the firefighters that are down, they need a break, they're covering an awful lot of shifts, and we need to, they're back for these positions, and it's a good thing that we have some good worthy candidates that were able to be chosen and hired. Coming to that, also, thank you.
Mr. Wallner?
I'm pretty good.
Thank you. Okay.
I would say thank you for everybody that came out, I think it was great. I wish we had a higher turnout, and, and I'd like to, you know, I'd like to thank everyone who voted and didn't vote for me. And just to remind everybody, the contrary of popular belief, the great thing about a town is that every select board member represents everyone, meaning everyone's accessible. It's not, you know, like in a city, there's, everybody's got their little clique based on neighborhood, so, you know, I'd like to say that it's, it's a privilege to be back. Also, again, thank Mr. Carroll, it's not easy to do something like this at that age, because it's just, it's hard enough to do it when you think you've got a few things figured out. And then congratulate, you know, Mr. Griffin, and thank Mr. Hayden, I did learn a lot from him, I was liaison for two years on the CPC, and I know that he always took the time to answer a question when I had it, because I'll tell you the truth, when you first, when you first out liaison for CPC and you've never done it, it's like, I don't know what anybody here is talking about. So you literally need people to explain to you that, Vincenzo, I know you thought we were going to do this quick, but there's going to be seven hundred and fifty hearings before we get a garage approved. You're like, okay, fine. And he explained that to me, so. And I should have gone last, but I'm used to doing this, so I'm sorry. Mrs. Manny Pelly?
Oh, thank you, yeah, welcome back. Yeah, I do, I'm glad you said something about Mr. Hayden too, because he, he has been a fixture here and so helpful to us, and he's very dedicated to the town as well, and wishing, wishing Mr. Griffin good luck too as he starts that, and hoping, as you said, that Mr. Carroll might maybe volunteer for something here to, another board or commission here too that might be available. But I also was wondering, I have two things. First, the Memorial Day parade and activities, do you have the information on that? Because we did, we, we were contacted by Mr. Stratton, I think, about which members would be there for Memorial Day, and I don't know if anyone sent back to him, and then there is a parade that.
There is.
There is a parade that's going to, that we typically would walk, you know, the parade as well. Hopefully it'll be nice and sunny, but I don't know what time or anything like that, but I do know that Mrs. Strat wanted us to get back to him if we could be there.
I believe the parade kicks off at eleven AM, but I haven't got a full schedule to board.
And they do this bicycle contest beforehand, so if you're a younger member, I think it's for the younger students or kids in the community to decorate it up, decorate up your bicycle, bring it up to where the senior center is, the top of the hill, and everybody can look at it and pick, pick what they, pick what they, pick the favorites, I guess, or pick the winners, you know. And so it'll be fun if we could have more people, more of the kids do a, do a fun thing with their bicycle and join in in the, in the day, in the day of remembrance. And more people maybe do the parade and stuff like that, so. I think you'd get in touch with whom, Mr. Gilberto, for that, if you're doing a parade, or you want to, want to join by walking in the parade, the groups, the community groups?
So they can, clearly contact Ms. Magner here at the town hall.
Oh, okay.
Should you get the information out to the veterans committees and to Mrs. Stratton and so on.
Yeah, yeah. And the second thing is that we have been given this kind of breather of time from how we were kind of accelerating the sewer project to now having a few months, you know, till, I think we would project an October town meeting, and maybe it's a good time to mobilize that sewer committee and put some people, some business people in the community, some people, you know, may reside or work along the route, some business owners along the route. I think maybe it might be a good idea to mobilize those people to, to, you know, activate that committee, so we could get people appointed to activate that committee, to go out in the community and go and explain the benefits of this sewer project and why we need this[1700.88]